And it's a great resource for us that I actually emailed it to all of you before the meeting started. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Arlen?
So we did just have our North Cook meeting, our next meeting is in September. And primarily, our executive director brought us up to date on operational issues. He has spent most of the last couple of months dealing with COVID, obviously. And but the good news is, we are in good financial shape, and we have no forecast of any issues for North Cook. And so I have nothing, I'm going to get you all a copy of the report, so enough to dwell on it. I have nothing of great consequence, other than the good news to report to you. I did want to touch on what Phil said about Sheila while I'm here. And is as of two months ago, or two months before she passed, Sheila was still coming to the Northwest Suburban Mental Health Task Force that I'm a member of. And she's served on that all these years, after leaving her role as mayor, in supporting our efforts to build supportive care facilities for those with mental and physical disabilities. So she continued to fight on, Phil, as you said, and she's a lady to be proud of.
Thank you, absolutely, absolutely. Any other governmental agency updates, either Jessica or Stacy? And Stacy?
Nope, nothing.
Nothing here.
Okay. That concludes our board communications. We'll move into staff communication superintendent's report, Dr. Conlin.
Well, good evening, everybody. And I wanted to jump right into our conversation this evening over the topic that we are all most focused on right now, and that is the reopening of of school for the 2020-21 school year. And so if you give me a moment, I am going to share my screen. I do have a slide deck that I would like to to go through and just provide some some updates to the board as it relates to our reopening plans as they currently stand, as well as our priority spending under the under the our CARE Act allocation. So just give me one moment while I get the right thing shared. And there we go. So right now, you should be seeing the the slide deck. And one of the things that I just kind of wanted to spend just a moment kind of in introduction is that, you know, one of the things that I think everybody understands is that this the COVID-19 global pandemic is going to have a profound impact on our educational setting, not only in District 21, but across the country. There has been a lot of uncertainty. One of the things that we have been waiting for finally came this week, and that is the the guidance, joint guidance from the Illinois State Board of Education and the Illinois Department of Public Health. In October, excuse me, in April, we formed the COVID-19 Educational Impact Task Force. There are over 70 administrators and faculty members that are part of that task force, grouped into three working groups. And they, in their initial meetings, really generated some outstanding questions that then drove the administrative team to be able to begin to formulate very preliminary reopening plans. And then there was a lot of hurry up and wait, as we waited for the state guidance to to finally be released. And so then again, that happened on June 23rd. We very quickly began to look at that guidance, and we're very pleased that much of what is in our draft plan, and it's still very much a draft, is in pretty close alignment with what the guidance ended up being. So we are now working to really vet the the draft, to to have our task force respond to it, to poke holes in it, to find those things that we need to think more about, to to hear alternatives proposed, and then to, in short order, come to a final draft that then we can, you know, make sure the board is it has an opportunity to see and then release, hopefully, no later than the early mid part of of July. Our primary goals, as we look to the reopening, is to make sure that we are implementing and adhering all of the the relevant health and safety recommendations and requirements contained within the joint guidance, that we are maximizing in-person instruction of students, with our standard being every student, every day, for a full day, that we are ensuring a a noted focus on the social emotional learning and the health and physical and mental and safety of everybody. You know, we know that the past several months has been, you know, of devastating impact to many, whether it be their own personal family experiences with COVID, or the economic loss people have suffered, the disruption to normal routines and living. We know that kids are going to come back and and that there's going to be a loss of community that we're going to need to reestablish, that there's going to be a loss of routine, and that we're going to need to work very hard and together with with our families and with our community to support our kids, and support our adults, too. We are looking to maximizing the instructional focus to ensure that our our children are mastering those critical learning skills, particularly in math and literacy. We know that there is going to be learning loss. We know that there will be gaps. We also know that some students may come back and will have accelerated because of the independent work that they may have been undertaking, you know, while they've been away from school. And we also know that, you know, the challenges that we're going to see within a COVID school environment is going to cause us to need to really be creative in our problem solving to try and and present as balanced and as normal of a learning environment as we can. And that ultimately, it is very possible, if not probable, that we will go through periods of time when, based on infection, we may see a need to return to a a fully distance environment, learning environment, and that we are doing that as seamlessly as possible. We were taken by surprise in in March. We do not, we cannot be taken by surprise again. And so, you know, we did an amazing job in in moving over to a virtual distance platform, but now we know how to do it better. And so to be ready to do so at, quite frankly, a moment's notice is going to be a critical piece of this. So here's what we know now, as a result of of taking a look at the state guidance. And again, a lot of these things aren't necessarily going to be all that surprising. We know that social distancing is going to be required on buses and in all square, school areas to the greatest extent possible. Now, that is going to vary based on class size, classroom size, facility abilities. And so we will do everything we can to be as close to the ideal of social distancing, knowing that there might be some areas where we won't be able to have that full six feet, and that we are going to have to do a combination of mitigation efforts to to address that. We know that across the board, there is a maximum, while we're in phase four, of 50 occupants. It's not 50 children, that's 50 occupants within a a given space and on the bus. Classrooms, of course, will not hold house 50 people. That is not what we're talking about. Face coverings will be required to be worn at all times by everyone, by students and staff and visitors, except while outside and socially distanced. There are going to be the, we will be honoring medical exemptions for for students as long as we have a doctor's note on file. As I noted before, we are going to do the very best that we can to maintain as normal a school day experience as possible. But the bottom line is the 2020-21 school day is going to look very different. It has to. As I said, we are planning for a regular length school day, but the, one of the things that we are needing to take a look at is possibly looking at a scenario where our middle schools may need to start earlier than what they have in the past, and that's due to transportation. The reality is, is that, you know, with the limited number of students that we can put on a bus, we're going to need more bus routes, and that's going to take longer to accomplish. And so by, we're our transportation folks, by looking at the time difference, seeing, being able to move up the start times of our middle schools, we will generate more of that time that we need to safely and effectively get everybody who is riding a bus to school. And again, we're, that is something that we're actively working on, and and so that is not to say that that decision has been made concretely yet, but that is certainly looking like where we are, where we we may be headed. I can't emphasize enough that the key to our success as a school district is going to hinge on our ability and our willingness to follow the science, to be agile, to be flexible, and to be ready to deal with the unknown. It's going to be critical that we acknowledge and really embrace the fact that we're in a different world. This year is going to look very different than those in our past. And quite frankly, the only way we're going to really effectively get through it is to work together as a community and to really provide as regular of an educational experience for our students as we can. We know, particularly when we're talking about mitigation efforts, that that there are concerns. You know, we know that there are parents who are very concerned about their children wearing face coverings. There are differences of opinion as to, you know, whether the steps that we are taking or being required to take are valid. To be honest with you, you know, we are going to go where the science takes us and where the where the 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 health, public health authorities direct us to go. And I respect everybody, everybody in their in their their thinking, but ours is pretty clear cut. We follow the regulatory agencies and what they, what they recommend that we do. So here are our next steps. Again, we are going to be continuing to review and 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 working to understand the ISB guidance. It's a 60-page-long document. It is, you know, there's a lot in it. We have scoured it, but the more we read it, the more we look at it, the more we talk through things, the more we're going to be able to have a better understanding of exactly what it's saying. We are in the process of reviewing and revising our draft reopening plan. We had our a Educational Impact Task Force meeting today. Our various working groups are going to be meeting virtually in the coming days to to do their really deep dive and review of the draft and and and, as I said, poking holes in it and proposing potential alternate ideas. Once that is done, I am going to convene my superintendent's parent advisory council to review and to advise on the the draft reopening plan. And then finally, once we have the board have an opportunity to take a look and comment, our our plan is to to finalize and release that reopening plan as soon as possible. But again, with the with the target date of being that early mid part of July. So if not the week after Fourth of July, then early in the the part of the of the next week. And I forgive me, I don't know the exact date there. So I'll take a pause for a moment and see if there are any board members that have questions about this part of the of the presentation before I I move on to CARE Act conversations.
Thanks, Mike. Bill, just give me a quick second. Mike, do you know whether or not the ISB guidelines allow for the interchangeability of shields as opposed to other type of face curtains, masks? You know, face shields will be as acceptable?
Yes, so we are, it it is very clear within the guidance that that it is permissible for staff to be wearing face shields. In in fact, our plan is to purchase face shields for our staff so that they can, you know, be seen. We believe, and when I say we, it's it's kind of regionally as we are discussing this, and based on what we heard from a webinar that the state board offered yesterday, that that is also permissible for students. And so that is the the posture that we are taking. Unfortunately, it was a little murky in the the actual guidance, but but the consensus is, and then also based on what they said at the webinar, you know, from ISB, is that yes, indeed, face shields may be worn by by children as well. And we would certainly support that and and welcome that amongst our, if that's a an acceptable alternative to our our parents, then regular having a, you know, face mask, face covering.
Thanks, Mike. That 60 pager is quite something to behold. Bill, you got your hand up?
Your mic's off, Bill.
Turn on mute, Bill.
Thank you.
There we go.
A quick question for clarification, Mike. You talked about getting the document out to the public the first, second week of July, but also talking about getting board input. Are we planning to have a meeting for that prior to your release?
Well, I'm going to need to consult with Phil on that. You know, it it may very well be that that, you know, we can have you guys take a look at it independently, and if we find that there is a a desire on the part of the board to come together and to have deeper discussions about this in 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 a in a meeting, that we could organize a special meeting. It's not necessarily, at least in its current form, a document that I I feel needs specific board approval. But so it's certainly a possibility, and it and it's something that that we're going to need to to kind of work through. The issue is, is that when our July board meeting is, if we're ready to go a little sooner, that would be better. It is just the the more time we can give parents to actually be able to read and review the document, the better off we're going to be.
I agree. That's why I asked the question the way I did.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, I don't see any other board member hands.
Arlen?
Ian, Arlen?
So on the question of approval, I think you're right, Mike. However, from a tacit point of view, once that's published, people are going to come up to us and say, did you approve that? And I'm not saying we need to formally approve that, we just need to understand it all.
Yeah, point taken. And and again, if I have absolutely no problem at all with organizing a special meeting, if that's the the comfort of the board and Phil and 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 having that. In fact, I don't see that that is a bad idea at all before it 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 would go public. I mean, in essence, it's going to go public in that open board meeting, because this, these are not subject to closed session conversations, so.
Right, right, right. And my second point, you talked in the document a lot quite about the emotional side of things, rightly so. Last year, we talked a great deal about trauma-based learning, Mike. So how does that get expanded into this, since this year certainly would seem to be the time and the place for a lot of attention to trauma-based learning?
Yes, so as you may recall, at the beginning of 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 last year, in fact, during the summer of of 2019, each school formed it formed a a a trauma team, a trauma-based that, you know, so a committee of 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 staff. Our actual title for it is, you know, is slipping my mind at this point, Resiliency Team. Thank you. And so those teams are active, they still exist. Each school had, through the course of 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 last year, have engaged in a multitude of different activities around enhancing the staff's understanding, knowledge, and 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 ability to deal with students who have experienced trauma. That work is only going to intensify. And so, you know, we are looking under Kim Klein and 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 her staff, and we're looking at at a, you know, all kinds of different things that we may need. Her team met last week to really go through some brainstorming about what are those things that we need to look at, what are what are materials and or or resources that we need to acquire and 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 get, you know, in place? You know, there's a lot of PD, book studies and other things of that nature that has gone on, that will continue to go on. So it, in some ways, it's almost prophetic that we were doing this work. It was absolutely needed.
Yep.
irrespective of of COVID. But the fact that we are now experiencing this and have a year head start, and we've got a long way to go, but a year head start on 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 doing this work, I think will help quite a bit.
Yep, great. Thank you.
Okay, Mike, you want to proceed?
So I think Stacy had something.
I did, just real quick, two things. One, I have relayed some of my feelings about their reopening plan that the state provided to Dr. Conley. I think there's just so much that we don't know, more than we know, which is what makes me very uncomfortable about it. You know, I'm having to make some decisions regarding both of my children on whether they're going to be able to go back into a classroom, as I am someone that is on the list of people who should, you know, be nowhere near it. So there are some tough decisions that families are going to have to talk about and make. And so I guess what I, two things, I would hope as we wind through this and you guys get your feet underneath you and know what tough work it is, I started to read that 60-page document, and well, that's all I have to say about that. But I would like a, as we make some decisions and formalize things, I would be very supportive of having another board meeting to have a more robust conversation. And I'm, there's no way I'm the only board member that's been contacted by about a half a dozen parents with concerns and fear and all those things about the safety of their family. So I look forward to you getting that group together, but, you know, families are going to have some tough conversations to have and and, you know, I, as as we really have become this, you know, anchor for information, I, you know, I think we need to carry it through and make sure that we're doing the best that we can in reference to what the state wants, but also, you know, the Wheeling Prospect Heights, this area was hit fairly hard. The positivity rates in Wheeling are still higher than they are in other areas. And so those factors do concern me, as we have a lot of manufacturers and a lot of people who are in what I would call high-risk jobs. And so I think as the downstate districts have some uniqueness to the struggles that they deal with, I think it's important to note that this area did have a hard hit, and we were impacted very significantly, and and families are feeling that. And so as we have these conversations, I just want to make sure those things are noted.
Yes, agreed. And and one thing I was actually remiss in in mentioning as I was going through the initial kind of preliminary look, is that we are seriously looking at and considering offering a an option for families, an open enrollment distance learning program for the the coming school year. So those families of which you 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 speak that are either uncomfortable with the concept of sending their children back, or they themselves have are immunosuppressed or are high-risk households, that they have a quality alternative, this is a a distance learning program that would mirror. As a matter of fact, in many ways, we're looking at at upgrading some some of our broadcasting and and video technology to be able to do some some live streaming from live classrooms and things of that nature. But in any event, to mirror the the instructional experience that our in-person kids are receiving, it will not look like what the what the spring looked like in terms of kind of the limited interaction, you know. But in any event, that it is something that there is an an alternative, a quality alternative operated by our staff, by our teachers. This is not, we're going out and offshoring to some other virtual academy. Our people operating this, and we're working very closely with DEA and in in taking a look at how we can do that. And as you'll see, you know, in in just a little bit, there was interest in our in our most recent parent survey for that option. So we are absolutely looking to to try and make sure that that is available and operating.
Thank you. I mean, they're hard decisions to make. I, you know, my kids will be doing their college online for semester because I have a condition of which I get it. I, you know, I, it's not good. So I just want to make sure that we, in addition to following those, I respect the state of Illinois guidelines, I, you know, I have some of my own feelings about how that went down, but I also think we have to take into consideration the kind of community that's reflected here and and take those really very real day-to-day concerns into consideration. And I I appreciate you saying that because I think that does give some people some cause to breathe a little easier.
Agreed.
Thank you.
I think Arlen had one more thing, but your mic is off, Arlen.
I did. And as long as we're looking at the possibility of a lot of allowing and providing for parents who do have concerns about sending a child to school or have immune issues, I would suggest that maybe we should also look at, when we get back into full board meetings, somehow making that opportunity available to the to individuals and voters to follow our meeting. I know that's more complex, but it might be something we should look at.
Well, to that point, Arlen, I did ask Mike Frantini to begin to investigate what kind of of equipment in, video equipment and and live streaming equipment we would need in the boardroom. And he is working on those things, and it was my intent to bring that, you know, once I talked to Phil, because Phil hasn't even heard this yet, to bring that as a discussion point in our July meeting. And so, you know, if that is a a desire of the board, that we would be able to offer that, you know, as soon as we can, you know, get the, you know, the technical aspects of it worked out.
Yeah, I think it's, from my perspective, absolutely the right thing to do and the transparency that this world requires.
Make sure you bring us the cost with it, Mike.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Are you still sharing your screen?
Yeah, yeah. So we're gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and and move on to talking about our our priority spending plans for the CARE Act. The CARE Act, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. The CARE Act obviously is the second stimulus package that the was passed by Congress earlier this spring. As a result of that allocation, the state has has allocated 1.038 million in funds to District 21. Those funds are intended to support our district in meeting the increased costs that we will incur, both in education and operation during the pandemic. We are working on finalizing a an initial CARE Act spending plan, which will then be submitted to the Illinois State Board of Education for their approval. That spending plan may be amended as necessary. And so as we see perhaps shifting priorities, we can go back in and and reallocate as necessary. Those CARE Act funds must be expended in full by September 30th of 2021. So these are funds that are designed to carry us through from now all the way up until that point. Just to kind of go for a a quick summary of what our priority spending is, I've divided this into two categories. Our first category being health, safety, and operational expenditures. Obviously, a large portion at this point of the allocation, approximately $300,000 at this moment. We are looking at for the purchasing of necessary PPE, personal protective equipment for staff and students, the face shields, single-use masks, gowns, gloves, you know, all of those different types of of things. You know, the purchasing of materials and signage to, you know, support the social distancing, you know, in our facilities, as well as making sure that we have signage about, you know, handwashing prompts and what COVID symptoms look like, you know, are before, you know, people enter in, they can, you know, be reminded of those things. So all of those different types of of signage. We have already been purchasing additional health and safety equipment, infrared thermometers. Again, like I said, the 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 different kinds of PPE. So again, a big portion is a purchasing of additional cleaning and sanitation equipment. We have already purchased a good a deal of of some of these things through some monies that we got from FEMA. In particular, we have purchased for each building a an ionizer, which I kind of, I kind of like to call it a disinfection bomb, where literally, you know, you you put it in a classroom, it it projects kind of ionized disinfectant and and just adheres to all surfaces and, you know, disinfects it in one fell swoop. In addition, each building will have three, I kind of like to call it the Ghostbuster gun, where it's the backpack and 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 they actually literally have the misting of the the disinfectant, kind of you see it on the 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 airplanes as they're kind of walking up and down the aisles. Each building will have three of those. And then obviously, hand sanitizer and, you know, the hand sanitizer, as much as we can get, hand washing equipment. get, hand washing equipment, you know, all of the, you know, uh, uh, safety equipment for the bathrooms, plexiglass, you know, for the, the reception areas and things of that nature. Many of these things are already being installed, but those are all purchases that we'll be going through. Michael just sent me a message that each of the nurses' offices will also have a, is that a wand or a, a, a stationary unit, Michael? A wand, okay. So each of the nurses' office will have one of those disinfecting wands, which is going to be critical because if we, we have a, a student that is exposed or a staff member that's exposed, we are going to have to, you know, do some, some very immediate deep disinfection and in fact even shut that area down for at least 24 hours before we are able to utilize it again, based on the guidance. We know that we are going to need to purchase additional supplies and learning manipulatives because this is not a situation where we are going to be able to share supplies. And so as we're looking at math manipulatives, as we're looking for, you know, looking at pens and pencils and things of that nature, it really is going to need to be for an individual student. And so we are going to need to purchase additional kits of those types to support the, the learning inside the classroom. And then as we, this is just a description, there are other items that haven't been captured in here, but as we move to category two, we really look at it from a purchase service and a human resources perspective. We know that we are going to need to really kind of make some additional learning tools and support tools available, both for in-person use as well as distance learning usage. You know, another item on the agenda here is, is the expansion of Power School Systems, which is inclusive of our Schoology School Student LMS system, something that will make it much more seamless. It's basically Google Classroom on steroids, you know, to kind of not, not just use for our, our in, in person, but also for the distance learning and the transition between. That's for our grades three through eight, grades K-2, sometimes three. There's another one called Seesaw. We will continue to utilize that. We will be bringing in a new assessment platform, a data analytics and assessment platform called Performance Matters, that will very much support our ability to measure our academic progress, both in-person and remotely and across the board, you know, more common assessments, which is a priority within our strategic plan irrespective of COVID. So that's kind of a win, you know, in, in, in both ways. We are going to need to place bus supervisors on our buses. You know, it is simply unreasonable to expect a single bus driver to be able to ensure that or try and ensure that kids are social distancing on the bus, that they're, you know, following, that they're wearing their face coverings, that they're following safety procedures. And so we will need to place supervisors on our buses. And so that is going to be an added expense. Our buildings are going to need additional custodial support, particularly in the evenings because of the level of deep cleaning and disinfection that we are going to need to do. And so we are working very closely with DEA to, you know, ensure that we are able to bring in that additional, albeit temporary, and when I say temporary, I mean for the next school year or until we move beyond this pandemic, to make sure that we are able to do that and in due deference to the collective bargaining agreement. We are going to have much higher supervision needs, you know, particularly at the elementary schools. And so as we're looking at safely getting the kids inside, making sure that we're not congregating in areas, if we have movement that needs to occur, being able to escort kids to and from where they need to go, we're going to have a lot more lunch periods, whether they're in the classroom or in other locations, we're going to need additional supervising for that. And we're just going to need more, more people, more adults to be able to, to make sure that we are maximizing our safety net here. In addition, we are going to need additional health office staff, particularly in the elementary. We have RNs and health assistants. We have CSNs that, that, you know, travel between buildings. Simply put, with our elementary buildings having one secretary and one health aide, it's not enough. They are going to need additional assistance in that health office. And that's not to say that the middle schools are not on our radar for that, but to be honest, the middle schools have a lot of support in their offices. They have two secretaries, there's a dean, there's a health assistant, there's an assistant principal and a principal. And so our priority right now is making sure that our elementaries have the manpower that they need. And if we find that middle schools need additional assistance, we will, you know, we will meet that need. But, you know, right now, we need to make sure that, that our, our elementary schools are taken care of. Finally, within CARE Act, we are going to be seeking to employ a district contact tracer. This is somebody who will be on staff, who will be preferably an RN and/or somebody with a public health background that will be able to support the school nurses in coordinating our COVID mitigation. If we do have an exposure that they are able to make the contact with families, make the contact with whomever may have been exposed by that, they're also able to coordinate with local and, and state public health agencies. That way, our school nurses and our school health assistants can focus on kids and taking care of them while some of the logistical, you know, kind of again, that whole coordination piece is being handled by this, by this contact tracer. Finally, in addition to CARE Act funds, we are going to leverage our federal Title I, Title II, Title IV, and then other state and local resources to provide the additional support that we are going to need, particularly to address the learning loss and the learning gaps that we know we are going to encounter specifically. This would be coming out of Title I and local funds to ensure that there's equity and all elementary schools have this service available to them. We are seeking to employ reading and literacy interventionists in all elementary schools. This again, right now is for the coming school year. We will need to, as a district, take a look at our, at the state of our finances, take a look at our state of ability to, to maintain a position of that nature. We've always wanted a position of that type, but you know, I can't make those guarantees. But what I do know is we're going to need them this year, particularly on our elementary schools, that the, the learning to read and, and not losing that skill, having those skill deficits is closed, is critical to the success of those students in later years. Again, that's not to say that we're not concerned with the middle school. We will absolutely be looking at what kind of supports middle school needs. But to be honest, the kids in the elementary school are learning to read. For the most part, kids in, in, in middle school are, are sharpening their reading skills and they're reading to learn. So, you know, the critical need is really at that, from an educational perspective, starts in that elementary area. As I noted before, we are looking at those video conferencing and live streaming equipment that we can be utilizing in classrooms. We are looking at a very promising system that 214 is actually installing in their classrooms. Frantini is, is, you know, actively investigating that and it is, it does look very promising. What's going to be key about this is that then those students that are distance learn, learning can be part of a live classroom, as well as quite frankly, after this is all over, if we have a child who is homebound because they have leukemia and they are on chemo and they can't be in the classroom. Well, yeah, they can be in the classroom because we set that puppy right up in the, in, in the classroom and they're part of it. So this is not just for now, this is something that will be quite beneficial for us in the future. And as I said, the resources we will need for SEL supports or additional professional development for mental health and then really directed support for the mental health needs of our, of our students, staff and families. So that was a lot, but I, you know, kind of giving a, a snapshot of where we are now. And if there are any questions about CARE Act, we can, we can tackle those.
I just have two. For the extra nursing support in the elementary buildings, do you have a, a, an education level that you're looking at for what they need to have in order to be that extra support?
Yeah, we would be looking preferably at somebody who has at the very least a CNA or an LPN, or certainly an RN. You know, it, it, it depends on, on what the candidate pulls, but we would be looking for someone who has that, at least a CNA in, in that kind of, of credential.
We just, we're rich in those in the area because Wheeling High School has a really great CNA program, so.
And that's who we'll be reaching out to, to get a candidate. Absolutely.
And then.
I said that in the meeting last night, I said, we've got CNAs that just graduated from high school. Let's go after them, so.
And then as far as the contact tracing is concerned, are you guys working, I know a lot of area people are working with Lake County, who apparently has a contact, contact tracing through the state?
We're gonna, we're gonna reach out to, obviously not being in Lake County, I don't know how tight that resource is, but we are going to reach out to our local, you know, departments of public health to try and, and, and find somebody, but I really want somebody of our own. I, I don't want to be sharing with another agency, I want them for us full-time.
I think they're doing some training, that's all I was talking about. I think they're doing some very specific training for agencies in the area on contact tracing. I think Lake County Health Department is actually spearheading that. I was talking to them today, so.
Yeah, that's good to know. I will definitely look at that.
Yep, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks. Arlen? Your mic's off, Arlen.
Are we planning every day to take everybody's temperature when they arrive at school?
We are having conversations about that. You know, that is something that the, the, in the state guidance is either that we are doing it or we may have a protocol of parents certifying that they have screened their children. We are having conversations about that. You know, I can tell you that the, the logistical challenge of screening 6,500 kids every single day is daunting, to the point of not entirely certain that we would be able to do it, in, in addition to the fact that if we're doing that, we're also looking at needing to put up things like extended canopies from all of our different entrances in the event that it's inclement weather. We would need to be setting up isolation areas, which we will be doing anyway, but we would need more of them in the event that, you know, so it, there's a lot of, of nuance there that we need to look at. I will tell you that, quite frankly, the temperature taking is somewhat of an area of diverse, you know, you know, like dissonance as to how effective and how meaningful that actually is. So, you know, it, so we're looking at it, we haven't made that determination yet.
Okay, and then second, aside from that, there's a lot of great information that you provided on the things we're going to do to try to keep the students and staff safe. Have we thought at all about how we're going to promote that back out to the parents so that that may comfort a lot of parents because there's so much good stuff in there?
Well, the, the plan that we're talking about is going to be a comprehensive reopening plan that will be published, it will be translated in multiple languages, it will be graphically designed so that it's not just a letter from me that people are going to gloss over and not, you know, so we will have diagrams in it, we will have, you know, graphic examples that, that have been kind of developed by IDPH or CDC. So there will be an extensive district-level document that, that is the published version and what we want to be able to, to get out in that middle part of June. In addition to that, we will be doing webinars, you know, probably virtual town halls well before, you know, probably right in that beginning of August frame. We, I, I have asked our communications team and our instructional technology team to begin to produce a, a series of, of training videos, both for kids, parents, and staff. You know, I'm thinking of, you know, showing what somebody looks like in PPE so that a five-year-old isn't terrified, you know, trying to, to, to give that kind of assurance and, and just, and then also walking people through what this is going to look like. So all of those things are being actively worked on. The videos are, are, my hope would be that, that by August 1st, we, we would be able to have those things produced and, 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 you know, uploaded to our YouTube channel and begin to start promoting those things. But yeah, we, we will be blanketing in, in every way we can figure out the information to, to get it out to everybody. Bill?
Yes. Regarding the use of CARE Act funds, it's likely we're going to have a big expense for substitutes at all levels, whether a teacher gets ill or needs to be quarantined, a custodial staff member, even a principal. May need, are we allowed to use CARE Act funds and will there be enough CARE Act funds to help cover substitutes? Or is that something that's likely to have to come out of our base budget?
Yeah, I mean, we would be allowed to. I will tell you that with, there, there will not be space for it. The 1.038 million that we are getting from the federal government will not cover all of the expenses that we are going to incur. One of the things that I do think that we and the board needs to be prepared for is the fact that this is going to be expensive. We, I don't have a, a specific dollar amount to give you right now because it is something that we are still working on, but there is, you know, a distinct possibility that despite presenting a balanced budget, that we may end up in a situation where we will need to deficit spend as little as possible, but to make sure that we are adequately and safely and, and effectively addressing this situation. You know, that fund balance that, that this board has been very, very good about building, and we have now very healthy fund balances as compared to, you know, even three years ago. You know, in essence, that's a rainy day fund. We're in the middle of a hurricane. And so I, as, as much as we will try to keep that bottom line in the black, it is very likely that we will end up needing to, to deficit spend as, as little as we can. And the good news is, is that we have, you have built the, the, the reserves to be able to weather that. Not forever, by the way, you know, if we're talking about next year. And beyond that, then we're going to really need to, you know, look very, very closely at, at what our spending pattern will be like in, in future years.
Given the possible need for substitutes and the shortage of them, is there any thought of, with all the other temporary hiring you're thinking about doing, hiring some temporary substitutes so we're not caught in a shorthanded situation?
Well, we are always hiring substitutes. That is not a process that, that ever stops over the course of the year because we are always in need of substitutes. In the past couple of years, it has been very, very difficult to get enough subs and that has been because we've basically been in a full employment economy. We're not in a full employment economy any longer and so we may have additional resources but we never stop hiring. We will continue to, to do that and to hire.
Thank you.
So I, I believe that we're having some technical difficulties and Mike is, is working with Phil to try and, 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 you know, get that figured out. So are there any other questions right now on CARE? Okay, obviously I will keep the board updated a, as we, as we get into our, our next meetings in, in July. And with that, I'm, I've talked about the expansion of Power School in my previous presentation, so that is something that's on the agenda for board action and consent. So I'm not, unless there are specific questions, I'm not going to, to spend any more time on that. And with that then, I think what I'll do is, is I will stop sharing my screen and I'm not sure if Phil is back with us yet, so I'm sorry if I'm, if I'm taking over your meeting, Phil. But if we want to go ahead and, and let's have Michael, if you want to give us your summer construction update? Um, but, uh, if we wanna go ahead and, and let's have Michael, um, if you wanna give us your summer construction update.
Sounds, sounds good.
Um, Michael, before you go, uh, all right, I think Phil is back. But if Phil drops off again, that I just want to note for the record that, that, you know, um, Stacy, uh, Ellen will need to, to assume the chair. But Phil, you're back, right?
Yes, finally.
Good job.
Well. We are at the construction update, Phil. So you, you're back just in time for the excitement.
All right, Mike, you got a minute and a half. What's going on, man?
I will do it. Let, let, let's get through it. So, uh, first and foremost, uh, as everybody knows, we have about a ten million dollar construction spend during the summer. Uh, full-day kindergarten and maintenance work is, is basically the summary of that. Uh, we brought on Nicholas and Associates as our construction manager in December, and they have not disappointed between their relationship with Archon as our architect. Uh, our project is on time, ahead of schedule in some parts, uh, in spite of the global pandemic. The only, uh, issue that we're keeping our fingers crossed on is the cabinetry in the all-day kindergarten classrooms because those are being produced in Michigan and they had been shut down for some time. Uh, we believe they'll be here for the start of school. If not, we will phase them in on weekends and evenings. So what do we have that, that's coming besides those all-day kindergarten rooms and some air conditioning? The big things are renovations at homes. Uh, it's basically gonna be a new school after this year between lighting, um, the, the work on the air conditioning, uh, just doing a lot of work, uh, in the classrooms to get them back up to speed and doing paving and the canopy, which will be the, the showcase of that when you pull up to the building, uh, like Cooper, uh, but doing some really cool things between the brick staining and the panels behind that canopy, which will be, uh, it'll be really awesome when it's done. Uh, Holmes and Hawthorne are also getting some new entryways as far as the drop-off points. Uh, the driveways are getting new paving and some additional, uh, work at, at Hawthorne to make it more accessible. So, uh, once we get all that done, we'll be putting schools back together for fall of two thousand twenty. Uh, as you know, with the all-day kindergarten rooms, every room has a sink. Uh, some of the rooms, uh, about half of them have restrooms in them. Uh, these are just some of the plumbing upgrades that have been started and we're well on our way ahead of schedule. We've had plumbing inspections, uh, and are really starting to move on those, those rooms. So we will be ready to go in the fall when students return. Uh, we have new walls going up essentially anywhere where there was an accordion wall, uh, in, in those kindergarten spaces. We are going ahead and constructing either a cinder block or a gypsum wall so that we have noise reduction and privacy in those rooms. Uh, we have at Frost, this picture on the right is of the calming room that's being constructed. That and the sensory rooms that we have the appropriate separation, appropriate doorways, lighting, all the things that we need to keep our students of their most essential needs, uh, safe and, and in this space that, that they can decompress for a little while, uh, when they're having a, a moment. So, uh, we are also doing a lot of flooring throughout the district. Uh, London is getting a complete makeover, as you know. Uh, that picture on the right is the second, uh, the commons area, the back commons area, uh, that now is actually complete. I was back there today. This picture was from the morning, uh, as of this afternoon, me and my triniti took a walk back there and that floor looked amazing. It's really, uh, it's really making that not only the hallways pop, but remember the classrooms are getting all new flooring as well. Um, and then on the left is just showing the moisture barrier that we're putting down. And that way we won't have any of the issues that we had in the past with that floor where the tiles pop. So this is a one hundred percent solution to make sure that we are not going back and fixing things in four or eight or ten years. Uh, mechanical upgrades, Holmes obviously is getting the most. Uh, they're getting basically a full upgrade of their rooftop units, uh, getting, uh, some new units in the classrooms to make sure that their air conditioning is fully functional. Uh, we also, we also have the Tarkington Gymnasium getting new air conditioning this year. Uh, so that's a, that's a big plus over there. Um, this is the Longfellow gym floor. All in all, we have two gym floors, Frost and Longfellow, that are getting new mondo gym floors. Uh, this one is the Longfellow floor. Uh, me and Glenn were over there a couple of days ago. It really looks amazing. And again, low maintenance with all of our flooring so that we're not stripping off product, putting new wags down and having that process each year. Truly, this is a, a low maintenance to no maintenance solution that will save us money in the end. So that's a, that's a big plus for us. Uh, we are painting the entire, uh, building at Longfellow. Uh, this year they're on the painting cycle. We also have our six buildings that have the kindergarten classrooms going in. You can see on display the new district palette of colors in these pictures, uh, so that, that's a really positive thing. And we are doing a lot of that painting with our summer work. So a lot of those high school and college kids are there making a huge difference. They did the entryway at London, uh, which truly, when that flooring's down and the new entryway's there, uh, it, it's gonna look like a brand-new school. Uh, items that we've completed thus far and items that are in progress, as I said, we've got the two gym floors at, uh, Frost and Longfellow. We already have completed the, uh, four, uh, gymnasiums that are getting new lights. That would be Frost, Longfellow, Poe and Tarkington. Um, obviously, uh, what's not completed and starting in progress, we still have more lighting. Almost the entire, the entire school at Holmes is getting new lighting. That flooring at, um, London i- is, is well on its way, but, but still has probably about three to four weeks to go before completion. Uh, we also have new flooring going into all of the new kindergarten classrooms, as you know. Uh, and then mechanicals are still in progress, that outside paving, uh, still being worked on. But I will say, i- it has been an amazingly smooth summer. Uh, obviously ten million's a little bit less than thirty-eight million, but there still is a lot of work that goes into ten million dollars. And I have to tell you, this presentation, I, I forgot to mention at the start, Glenn was a huge help. I mean, he has been out there still doing his thing, putting pictures on Twitter, making sure that everything is, is going extremely smoothly. Uh, and put together these pictures and much of the presentation without Glenn and his team, we would be well behind the eight ball given what we're facing this year between our response to COVID and having this much construction. So I really do thank, thank Glenn and all the operations, the maintenance, custodial staff. So, um, what do we have next looking ahead to next summer already? Because even though we are only about a third of the way through this summer's construction, obviously we have good news to celebrate. Today we closed on the remaining bonds from the referendum. So we are twenty-three and a half million dollars heavier in our capital funds project, uh, fund. And so we'll have next year, we'll be doing those remaining kindergarten rooms at the three buildings that are not getting the fixtures this year, just getting the furniture. Uh, we still have some additional mechanical repairs and upgrades, outdoor lighting for security purposes. And then the big one that everyone's been waiting for and was a, a big centerpiece of the referendum, twenty-first century furniture upgrades for all our classrooms and learning spaces, that will be done over a period of time. We would love to get to all of it in one year. Uh, that's obviously not gonna happen in one year, but we do have three years to spend those bonds. But, uh, Mike and I are assembling the committee. We'll be sending out information soon to start getting people on board so that we could talk about what those twenty-first century classrooms look like and how we can start spending that money next summer. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Board members, any questions for Michael?
Yeah, Arlen here. A couple of things, Michael, thank you for the report. Uh, outstanding as always. Uh, Kilmer has had a leak in the front of the LMC in the past that I've seen and has been reported. Do, have we ever figured out where that's coming from and what we can do about it?
So my understanding is Glenn and I walked that building with Matthew and Scott, the head custodian, Matthew, the principal. And my understanding is that leak is not leaking anymore. Um, so my understanding is it has been resolved based upon some work regarding water flow away from the building and some other issues recently. I will go back and check, but I know we had, we had talked a little bit about it and my understanding is that it's been resolved.
That would be great. Um, and then in turn, I know that, uh, lighting is on our agenda. Um, will you or somebody else walk all the build, the exterior lighting for next year? Uh, walk the buildings to be sure that when we do that, that we cover all, there's a lot of dark areas, obviously, that, uh, we've never lit before. But in these days and the, and the kind of world we live in probably needs some light, I'm assuming.
Yeah, Arlen, keep in mind that there is going to be an entire design process. This isn't just about replacing lights. Um, Archon and our, and our engineers literally are going to be doing, uh, site by site, study of where to place. I- i- it is not simply replacing lights. We ask, we have to make sure that the light that we are putting in drops off at a certain point so that we're minimizing light pollution. So it is gonna be, it's a project. It is gonna be a comprehensive, um, uh, design process that our, our architects are gonna be, uh, spearheading.
Okay, great.
Yeah, just to add to what Mike said, we obviously have to work the village too because this is one of those issues that they do have some say in to regarding code, so.
Right.
Okay.
Mike, thanks for jumping in on and responding on that one. Any other board members? If I can just re- remind board members, if you could hit your raise hand button so I know who's looking to, uh, to ask a question or contribute to with a comment, please. Okay, Michael, is there anything else?
Uh, no, I'll rejoin you at the last part of the meeting again.
Michael, you're still sharing your screen, so if you wanna stop.
All right, hold on. Hold on, zoom. There, oh, there we go. There we go. And stop. No, oh, I gotta go up to the top. Hold on, am I good?
You're good.
You're good.
Okay. There we go. And we're ready to move into, I believe, public comment. Uh, the board will now receive public comment for up to three minutes. Such comments should not include discussion of personnel matters, which should of course be brought directly to the attention of the appropriate school official. I know that we have a number of, of folks, um, on, on the call type. Um, for those of you that are first timers, let me just indicate that as a note to you, we may not, uh, who may not be familiar with our procedure, this is not a question and answer section, the public comment one. It is a listening time for the board to listen to, uh, community members. So, uh, each person who does wish to speak to us has a three-minute timeframe to present your thoughts. So, um, Mike, if I can ask for some assistance?
Yep, Phil, we don't have any, any hands raised.
None?
Nope.
Okay. Well, appreciate that. Um, appreciate everybody listening. We now move into the consent agenda section. Um, does anybody need anything pulled from, uh, the, the consent agenda? I don't see any board hands. Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Arlen, your mic's off.
Phil Harrison.
Second, Stacy Allen.
Yeah, I made the motion, Arlen Gould.
Okay, Debbie?
I think Debbie's, oh, there she is.
Yeah, no, my, 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 my connection was unstable, so, um, Bill?
Hi.
Jessica?
Yeah.
Stacy Allen?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Phil?
Hi.
Arlen?
Hi.
And Stacy?
Yes.
Okay, we now move into the next item on our agenda, which is board discussion. Um, Dr. Connolly, did you wanna start us off on this?
So, um, one of the things that, that we, uh, felt strongly that we wanted to engage in, um, as an initial, uh, conversation, um, is to really begin to discuss our district's role, um, in promoting, uh, an equal, equitable and, and just society. Um, the events of the, the past eight weeks, um, or s- uh, six weeks, eight weeks, um, but for far too long, uh, in our past, um, are things that, um, you know, from a, 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 a racial, uh, equality perspective, um, from a socioeconomic perspective, these are things that have, uh, really plagued, um, our, our country. Um, and as public institutions of public education, we have a, 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 an important role, um, in, uh, in addressing those um, and working within our, our community to, um, really make sure that, that, uh, as a country, um, we're living up to what we should be living up to. And so, um, with that in mind, um, I, I, you know, Phil and I in, in speaking, wanted to, to make sure that we were able to have an initial conversation about, um, the direction, um, we will be wanting to take, um, as a board of education and as a district, uh, in this very important, uh, subject in the, in the weeks and months and years to come.
Thank you, Mike. Um, we've received, um, in the last week or so, a number of communications from community representatives, our constituents, um, talking to us and suggesting this very thing that we should be concentrating and seriously looking at our, our policies and our practices in regards to diversity and inclusion and equity. Uh, so, uh, wanted to just have a, a little bit of an opportunity to begin that process. This isn't going to be the final word, quite obviously, uh, on this. Um, and we don't have to spend a tremendous amount of time, but if board members wanted to share some thoughts at this early stage, let's do so at this point. Bill?
We've, we've had obviously those emails and Mike, you've done a great job in responding to them. I say, first of all, between the strategic planning program, as well as Dr. Connolly's intention anyway, we've gotten a step in that direction. Just a first step, we've got quite some ways to go. After doing a little examination, we're doing better than our peers, but that's not saying enough or.
Bill, we lost your audio.
Those kids.
There we go.
Um, and I think that that would be an opportunity for us to broaden our reach and increase our diversity as we go forward.
Thanks.
Thanks, Bill. Anybody else at this point?
Arlen, your mic is off.
And his hands not raised.
Um, I agree, and, uh, as an educational institution, it's really incumbent on us, uh, to deal with these kinds of hard issues. And, um, there's no question that we've done, I think, a credible job, better than our peers, but there's a lot more to do. And bringing the community along with us is exactly where I think we ought to be. So I'm delighted that the superintendent has brought this as an agenda item for discussion, and I'm looking forward to having further discussions about how, uh, we can achieve all of this.
Thank you, Arlen. Jessica?
Uh, I just, uh, I know that we put out a communication, uh, a couple of weeks ago to the community about our commitment to increase diversity in our staff and our schools. And I, I know that that's always been a commitment of the district and I know how much we deeply treasure the diversity in our community. And we'd love to see our professional teaching staff, you know, as much as possible mirror the diversity of our community. Uh, I, I know that we have a plan of action in our strategic plan. I wanna make sure that we're communicating that to our community regularly and as much as possible. I think it would be a great disservice to our community if we didn't raise this issue all the time. If this, this needs to be an ongoing commitment of our district to raise our diversity profile. Uh, and I think the worst thing we can do is just pay lip service to, well, here's our commitment, here's what we're doing, and then sort of drop it off. Um, I just, I, I know that our, our families expect that of us. And I, I honestly see no reason why we can't be a leader in that regard, like we're a leader in so many other amazing things that we do in education. Uh, so I wanna thank you for putting this on the agenda and I sincerely hope that we have really more in-depth discussions and Q and As about this, about what we can do, uh, as, as frequently as possible going forward. I know many of us have participated. I know many of us have participated in the marches and the protests. And, you know, for me and my family, it's been very powerful to be a part of that, to see my community out there, to see them yearning for diversity and respect. And I know that's, that's a role that we can take a significant part in as our district moves forward.
Thank you, Jessica. Dr. Conley?
Stacy is raising her hand in, on camera.
Thank you, I'm having some, I'm having some technical difficulty with Zoom, so I apologize. A foundation, and there are a handful of people on here, the foundation of the Family Learning Program so many years ago was to address deficits in, in a community-wide acknowledgement of the diversity of this community in, in many different forms and conversations. And so as we put some of that strategic learning, strategic planning for family learning on the back burner, given what happened second semester, you know, when we got together to have those initial conversations regarding the Family Learning Program, those were some difficult, uncomfortable conversations back then, where we weren't addressing racial disparity head-on, we were kind of actually talking right around it. But the fabric of the community has changed a great deal since those initial conversations have. And so in, you know, one stride, when you go to have those difficult, uncomfortable conversations, the more that you can provide a supportive environment for having those kinds of conversations, I think is important. And so we have some, some groundwork laid, but the diversity and the robust nature of the community has changed from 15 years ago even to today. So I think being able to, as we look at, at the difficult work and the fascinating work that went on with family learning, although it initially really addressed one population and one difficulty, over the years, it really blossomed out into a conversation on access to education, meeting people where they are and creating spaces in which you can have those conversations. And so I would just, as we go forward, I think historically, it's always important to look back and see the things that have changed in the, in the district and the areas that we were successful in having those difficult and uncomfortable conversations and taking the strength of some past work that we've done and being able to push forward.
Thank you, Stacy. Bill, did you have something else?
I'm just curious, I, like Stacy, I had some Zoom problems. I don't know if any of my comments were heard. So were you able to hear me before? I just got back on again, I had to leave the meeting.
Yeah, I believe we, I believe.
Okay, that's fine then, I'm good.
Okay. All right, was there anybody else who hadn't spoken yet and wanted to contribute at this point?
So I just wanted to kind of lay out some concrete next steps. My team and I are actively looking at what are the types of things that we need to do to set up the continuing conversation. And so my intention is, in your July board meeting, to bring some of those suggestions. You know, and, and I don't want to get into the preview of the list right now, because there's many different things that we are talking about. But I just wanted to publicly make the, the commitment that it is my intention to bring back an initial series of recommendations of how to further this conversation and further this work as we move into our new school year.
Very good, thank you, Mike. Obviously, our, this district is a majority-minority district. And by virtue of some of the more recent hirings that have been done, that have shown a a good solid leaning towards increasing the contribution of the minority community as professional staff, I think is a solid indication of where we are heading and the importance of which we place on, on that. So we look forward to the continuation, Mike, of that and moving this, moving this conversation forward and continuing to embed it into the culture of District 21. I think we're now are ready to move into old business. And we have a number of items here. We go back to Michael.
Good evening, again. The first old business item is the approval of the inter-fund transfer from the Transportation Fund to the Operation and Maintenance Fund. We posted for the public hearing after approval at last month's meeting. So we need to go ahead and convene the public hearing on this fund transfer based upon the school code.
Okay, may I please have a motion to recess the June 25th, 2020 regular board meeting and convene the public hearing regarding the inter-fund transfer from Transportation Fund to Operations and Maintenance Fund.
So moved.
Was that Stacy?
It was Stacy Allen, yes.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second, Jessica.
Thank you. Debbie, if you do a roll call?
Yes, Jessica?
Yes.
Stacy Allen?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Phil?
Hi.
Arlen?
He appears to have stepped away from his, from his computer for a moment.
Okay, Stacy?
Yes.
And Bill?
Hi.
Okay.
So in, so in brief summary, in past years, as you are aware, we were paying back the loan that was taken by the district from the, the education fund, or from the, to the education fund, from the transportation fund. But now, since we have finished repaying that loan, we had a surplus in the transportation fund that was was aided by the fact that we did not have to finish the full year of bus service. However, based upon the amount of the surplus, we did want to go ahead and transfer about $600,000 from Transportation Fund into the Operation and Maintenance Fund, which will then become part of the larger transfer from Operations and Maintenance into the Capital Projects Fund. As you know, we have a healthy list of items that we need to get to in the district for just our envelope issues, buildings, as far as the roofs, windows, doors, things like that. But we also have 21st Century Learning. Other things that we want to start planning for is we embark upon a new 10-year plan. So we're recommending that this transfer be approved tonight of $600,000 from the, from the Transportation Fund into the Operation and Maintenance Fund.
Okay, thank you, Michael. We are now in the public hearing. Do we have any members of the public who wish to speak at this point? I don't see any hands raised, Mike, do you?
No, I do not.
We're all set, Phil, there's none.
Okay. May I please have a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene our June 25th regular board meeting?
So moved. Arlen?
Thank you.
Second, Stacy Allen.
Thank you. Deb?
Okay, Stacy Allen?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Phil?
Hi.
Arlen?
Hi.
Stacy?
Yes.
Bill?
Hi.
Jessica?
Yes.
Okay, we are now reconvened into our regular board meeting. Board members, are there any questions for Michael? Seeing none, I have a motion to approve the inter-fund transfer.
Phil, I'll make the motion. Do I need to read that whole long preamble, or can I just read the motion itself?
Just read the motion, please.
So now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 21, Cook County, Illinois, as follows. The Board of Education hereby finds the recitals contained in the preamble of this resolution to be full, true, and correct, and does hereby incorporate them into this resolution by this reference. Two, the school treasurer is authorized and directed to make a permanent transfer in the amount of $600,000 from the school district's transportation fund to its operations and maintenance fund effective June 25, 2020.
Thank you, Arlen, may I have a second, please?
Second, Bill Harrison.
Thanks, Phil. Deb?
Okay, myself, yes. Phil?
Hi.
Arlen?
Hi.
Stacy?
Yes.
Bill?
Hi.
Jessica?
Yes.
And Stacy Allen?
Yes.
Okay. I believe we're ready to move on to item B, approval of the amended 2019-2020 budget resolutions. Michael?
And we need to recess into another public hearing on this one.
Of course we do. May I please have a motion to recess this meeting, our regular meeting and go into a public hearing?
So moved, Jessica Riddick.
Second, Stacy Allen.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Phil?
Hi.
Arlen?
Hi.
Stacy?
Yes.
Bill?
Hi.
Jessica?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Yeah, and myself, yes.
Okay, the board has now recessed our June 25th regular board meeting for a public hearing on the approval of the amended 2019-2020 budget resolution.
As there are no substantive changes, as there are no substantive changes from the amended budget that's been posted for the last 30 days, and the amendments were technical in nature because we, we were under budget over the, the course of the year. I won't go through a long presentation, but I will tell you that in July, we will have an updated five-year projection based upon our June 30 closing numbers and based upon information that has been shared with you already regarding the payroll deduction liability in the old, in the audit from FY19, that is actually an asset in fund balance, as well as some other items that our new auditors found. Our fund balances are strong, as Dr. Conley had said, and are ready to be used, not overused, but used appropriately for the COVID response. So I would ask that you approve the amended budget as presented.
Okay. Saying that, do we have any members of the public that have a question during this public hearing?
There's nothing, Phil.
Seeing none?
Yep.
May I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene our regular June 25th board meeting?
So moved, Bill Harrison.
Thank you, Bill.
Second.
Go ahead.
We all got it.
Second, Jessica.
Thank you. Deb, roll call.
Okay, Arlen?
Hi.
Stacy?
Yes.
Bill?
Hi.
Jessica?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Phil?
Hi.
Okay, we now adjourn the public hearing, reconvene our regular board meeting.
Only to go back into another hearing.
I'm sorry?
Only to go back into another hearing. This is the hearing, the, the bond issue notification hearing on the 4.4 million, oh, did I miss?
Wait, don't. We've got, we've got to approve the amended budget first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought we were there, sorry, I got ahead of myself.
Way to go, Michael, way to go.
Keep it short. I'm not passing the gavel yet, Michael. Board members, assuming there's not any questions for Michael on this one?
Yeah.
I have a.
Yeah, we do, we do. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the attached resolution to adopt the 2019-2020 amended budget.
Thank you. Second?
Second, Stacy Allen.
Thank you, Stacy. Debbie?
Okay, Stacy?
Yes.
Bill?
Hi.
Jessica?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Phil?
Hi.
Arlen?
Hi.
Okay, now item C, public hearing concerning the intent of the board to raise 4.4 million working cash bonds to increase our working cash fund. Michael?
So we need to recess into another public hearing.
Very good. May I have a motion to do so, please?
So moved, Bill Harrison.
Thank you, Bill.
Second, Jessica.
Thank you.
And Bill?
Hi.
Jessica?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Phil?
Hi.
Arlen?
Hi.
And Stacy?
Yes.
Okay, we've now recessed our regular board meeting, we're into a public hearing concerning the intent to issue the 4.4 million working cash bonds. Mike, has we, anything on that?
So that we have received nothing in the way of any type of objection or anything from the public as, as to date. Tonight is a night that we go ahead and, and get public comment from both the board and any citizens that wish to come forward. As part of the financial strategy that we outlined back in March, we issued the $23.5 million remaining on the referendum bonds. And due to interest rates, we are looking at issuing $4.4 million in working cash so that we can continue the capital work of the district and getting out in front of the issues, doing preventative items, rather than playing catch-up and spending more money on the backside. So this is just that time to take public comments. And then there is no action, which is why I was jumping ahead of myself for the budget. There's no action at the end of this hearing, so.
Okay. Are there any members of the public that wish to ask a question?
There's no public comment, Phil.
Very good, thank you. Board members, are there any questions for Michael on this at this point? May I have a motion then to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene our regular board meeting?
So moved.
It was that Stacy?
I gave it to Stacy.
Okay, second?
Second, Jessica.
Thank you.
Okay, Jessica?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Phil? Phil, I didn't hear.
Phil?
He's frozen on my screen.
He's frozen on my screen. There he is.
Oh, Phil. Yep.
Okay.
I'm sorry, my connection's going sort of in and out a little bit also.
Okay, Arlen?
Hi.
Stacy?
Yes.
And Bill?
Hi.
Okay, and there's no further action necessary at this point. Now, we move into new business. Dr. Conley, would you like to comment on, on item A?
Absolutely, so I'm very excited to introduce my recommendation for our new and, and first, Director of Assessment, Analysis, and Accountability. You may have noticed in the, in the video grid that, that there's a, a new face that's been kind of, you know, hanging in the background. Her name is Beatrice Reyes Chobres. And Beatrice is my recommendation, very, very strong recommendation for employment in this position. Beatrice, if you wanted to turn your camera and your mic on, feel free. There you are, hi. Beatrice will be coming to us most recently from her position as Assistant Superintendent in Aurora School District 131, where she's been many years, was a principal, a Director of Bilingual Services, and finally ended her time there as Assistant Superintendent. And, you know, I will tell you that, that above and beyond all, and we had very strong candidates the entire way through the process, but above and beyond, she distinguished herself as somebody who truly understood and, and had just solid experience in organizing and utilizing data to guide instructional decision-making, to guide instructional improvement. She's got extensive experience in program evaluation. She knows her craft, and she knows who we are. She did extensive research on us. And it was, by the end of the process, it wasn't a tough call to make. It was, it was a competitive field, but not a tough call to make. So Beatrice, if you wanted to take a moment to introduce yourself, feel free.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Conley. Good evening, board. Thank you so much for the opportunity to serve in District 21 in this new role. When I read that job posting, I'm like, wow, you gotta be kidding me, that's a really forward-thinking. And, you know, I told Dr. Conley, this job has all the meat and potatoes of what really can help kids move forward in their learning. So I'm really excited about it, and the mission and vision of your district tightly aligns with my core values as an educational leader. And I'm looking forward to joining the team and, and working with the staff and the students and community stakeholders, so thank you.
Well, so nice to meet you. At this point, we will look forward to meeting you in person at some point in our future. I'm very happy that even with your extensive research, you still wanted to join us. So that's both about you as well as us, I think. So that's both about you as well as us, I think.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Board members, may I have a, a motion to approve the employment agreement for the Director of Assessment, Analysis, and Accountability?
So moved, Arlen.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Jessica?
Thank you. Deb?
Okay, Stacy Allen?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Phil?
Hi.
Arlen?
Hi.
Stacy?
Yes.
Bill?
Hi.
And Jessica?
We can see you, but we can't hear you.
Raise your hand, Jessica.
Okay, that works.
Two thumbs up, I like that.
Beatrice, welcome to District 21.
Thank you. I'm so excited to be joining your team and I look forward to meeting you all in person.
And we do.
Welcome, we are as well.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Welcome again, Beatrice. We look forward to seeing you in person and the good work that you're going to be doing with Mike and the rest of the professional staff there. Moving on to item B, transfer of funds from Operation and Maintenance to Capital Projects. Michael?
Simply put, this is a combination of the $600,000 we just transferred into the O&M Fund as well as the $1.1 million that we are transferring from Operations and Maintenance into Capital Projects for a total of $1.7 million.
Thank you. Any questions for Michael? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the attached resolution authorizing a transfer of $1,700,000 from the Operation and Maintenance Fund to the Capital Projects Fund effective June 25, 2020.
Thank you. Sir, second?
Second, Stacy Allen.
Thank you, Stacy. Debbie?
Okay, myself, yes. Phil?
Hi.
Arlen?
Hi.
Stacy?
Yes.
Bill?
Hi.
Jessica?
Yes.
And Stacy?
Yes.
Last item on the new business, item C, inter-fund transfers of revenue for capital leases. Michael again.
Yes, and so this is an item that will disappear, I was supposed to disappear after this year, there's a Gatsby regulation that is going to take out the need to distinguish capital leases from operating leases, however, and they've extended that for a year. So until we hit that point, we have to do this transfer one more time. This basically takes the two operating, or the two capital leases that we have in the Ed Fund and one in the Operations and Maintenance Fund and requires us to transfer those dollars into the Debt Service Fund where capital leases are out of. So we recommend the transfer of these monies. It's two resolutions, you can take them simultaneously or individually, however you wish.
I think we would like to take them simultaneously if we could.
Yeah, I have them listed simultaneously.
Okay. If there's not any questions for Michael, if we can take them, have the motion, please.
Bill, do you want to do it?
Oh, why not?
Yes, he does.
Be it resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the inter-fund transfers of revenue from the Education and Operations and Maintenance Funds to the Debt Service Fund for the fiscal year 2020 for capital leases per the associated resolutions.
Thank you, Bill. Second?
Second, Jessica Riddick.
Thank you. Deb?
Okay, Phil? Nope, you froze again, Phil.
Raise your hand, Phil.
Thumbs up.
Why don't you come back around to him?
Yeah, come back around.
Arlen?
Hi.
Stacy?
Yes.
Bill?
Hi.
Jessica?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Phil?
Hi.
Okay.
Hi, 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 hi. Before we, I move, I have, request a motion to adjourn. Dr. Conley, are we planning for the July 16th next board meeting to be in person or virtual again?
A hybrid as, as the situation warrants, but yes, we, as long as we are in Phase Four and we can accommodate up to 50 persons in a space, we will have a, a live component. We will also continue to offer board members the ability to remote in, you know, to cater to their own personal situations. Yes, so absolutely. And I did have one more celebratory and, and recognition that I wanted to do very quickly. Today was the first day of our Fresh Produce Pickup Program through the Greater Chicago Food Depository, and we had, I think, 410 cases of use that we will have every single Thursday. And Cara Beach and Melissa Morgen say have been pivotal, not just with this, but also with our entire Friday food pantry that we were doing throughout May and into June. We had a little bit of a traffic problem because of the, of the flow coming into the London parking lot. Cars were lining up at 11:30, distribution wasn't scheduled to begin until 12:30, and we were out within, I, I believe, a little less than two hours. We've learned some lessons from today about the need and the amount of, of traffic that will be coming through, so we're looking at our, our system and, and reaching out Wheeling to try and see if we can traffic support because we caused a little bit of a, of a traffic jam on, on Dundee, and we would like to try and not do that again. But in any event, I just really wanted to make a, a special note for Cara and, and in particular, who was out there today coordinating all of it and, and keeping cool and calm while she was doing it because it was a little chaotic. And then also Melissa, who was working very hard on this, and this will continue for the foreseeable future, right? This is not necessarily something that is, doesn't have a, a defined end date.
So.
As evidenced by, as evidenced by what we saw today, there is an absolute need.
Right.
Well, great job. I drove through the traffic extravaganza today, and is there a way to have a conversation with the village to see if there's a way to do, like, I'm thinking like even back behind like the park district where you have that big lot or something. I, I couldn't get down Dundee Road today in the middle of it, so.
Well, we are going to have the conversation, but I do think that we can accommodate it on the London site. It's just a matter of how we set up that parking lot to be able to utilize multiple lanes, multiple stations and kind of, so it's just more of a design. So we're going to give it one more week and, and, and put those things in place. And then going into week three, if we need to, to move to an alternate site that is not in such a high-traffic area, we will absolutely do so.
And I just wanted to say, the Village of Wheeling, Dave Vogel had reached out to me to make some donation. They had some stuff donated, so I just wanted to make sure I mentioned, Vogel and Wheeling Helping Hands reached out. They had some candy, but they were very interested to know what we were doing and to get more information, so I just wanted to make sure, I thanked them publicly for that.
Okay, very good. Mike, good news. May I now have a motion and a second for the adjournment of our regular board meeting on June 25th?
So moved, Jessica Riddick.
Second, Stacy Allen.
Thank you.
Okay, and Stacy Allen?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Phil?
Hi.
Arlen?
Hi.
Stacy?
Yes.
Bill?
Hi.
And Jessica?
We have a yes?
Okay, that works.
Thank you all very much. It's been an interesting meeting tonight.
I know.